Okay, we will ask for everyone to mute or turn off their phones. Call the meeting to order and let's all stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for Gloria's new back and her ability to move around in a more comfortable way. We thank you for modern medicine and leading that doctor's hands and making her feel better. And just thank you for your mercy. We pray for those who are under the weather or are in pain or maybe in a situation of grief or sadness. We just pray that your comfort will be given to them. Pray for the things of this town that we will be beacons of joy for you and that your kingdom will be glorified through us. And all of the things that our town, the things that we do, we pray that we will do so in a way that's pleasing to you. Pray that we will use the taxpayers' dollars wisely and that the things that we present to them, that they will be just glad that we had done so. And just may it be heavy on our hearts to make wise decisions. And pray that as we come up on this Thanksgiving and Christmas season, that we will, for all the things that we have, we will give thanks to you and for our families, our loved ones. And we just pray for the less fortunate and just give us opportunities to share with them. In Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment period. We give you three minutes to talk about whatever you want to talk about. And we ask that you state your name and address and fill out a form for our clerk. And we ask, this is time for you to speak to us rather than us to go into too much depth and answering questions back and forth, but we want to give the time to you. And keep in mind, there is a public comment period at the end also. So if you don't get through what you have to say in three minutes, you can pick up where you left off. So I don't have any forms right now, but if there's anyone, it's first come, first served. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Scott, let's talk about the Adams Lake Dam improvements.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So today we have a consideration to amend the scope of work to the 2024 Adams Lake Dam Improvements Project PW 2024-10. As you know, Adams Lake Dam is a state-regulated dam. The 2023 SPOLOST projects, Adams Lake Dam was selected because of the need for removal of undesired vegetation in the way of trees and brush and growth on the downstream side of the, or downstream face of the dam. In February 2024, a professional engineering report or evaluation was performed with the upstream, on both the upstream and downstream faces of the dam. This study noted that safe dams had Adams Lake listed as a to-be-studied. Later, it was determined basically whether or not it needed to be, the determination was for whether or not it would be upgraded to a category-one dam. As a result, the possible upgrade and sufficient SPOLOST funds, the scope was expanded to also perform the work on the rest of the dam. And in April of 2024, council approved the design contract that included the expanded scope of work. Recently, Safe Dams has removed the dam from the to-be-studied list. This determination therefore makes the dam stay in a category-two regulation. Since potential classification was part of the decision in the 2024 to expand the scope of the work, staff is bringing this to council's attention to determine if council desires to reduce the scope of work to the downstream undesired vegetation removal only. Council should be aware of the following staff determinations if the scope was to be reduced. The first one is, is that the entire scope identified in the February 2024 engineering report will need to be completed at some future date, as these are all engineering needs regardless of the safe dam's classification. Delaying, number two, delaying the expanded scope items will result in an additional inconvenience to residents' school, buses, fire, police, and EMS access due to the road being closed two times instead of one time. Having the lake lowered a second time instead of once will also be an additional inconvenience to the residents and an additional risk for fish kill. Cost for the, number four, cost for the engineering plan revisions and additional construction administration and material testing will also increase. Based on the 3% inflation rate, the project increase has been calculated to be an additional $62,000 for a three-year delay, an additional $90,000 for a five-year delay, and an additional $168,000 for a 10-year delay. Please keep in mind that this does not include any additional soil that needs to be replaced from the erosion caused by wave action over that time period, nor does it include additional engineering and testing fees associated with the project since we're doing two instead of one. Since this project is fully covered under the 2023 SPOLOST, delaying some of these items could result in the required use of general funds to complete the project in the future. With that said, staff recommendation is council has the option to reduce the scope of work from removing undesired vegetation only on the downstream side of the dam and revisit the rest of the work needed at a future date. Or council has the option to continue with the already-approved plans to complete all the work under this one project. Staff's recommendation is that council continues with the approved plans to complete all the work under this one project. This is coming out of Fund 2023 SPOLOST, which is Fund 32249522213. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Scott, excuse me. When we originally approved this, that was when, that was still being considered as a category-one dam, correct?
That's correct. It was being considered as a potential category-one dam, but correct.
So why, you wrote here, you said that the engineering needs to be done regardless of safe dam's classification. Please, please tell me why it needs to be done.
The main, two main things on the face of the dam that are concerned. One is a drainage ditch that comes out of the road system. It's eroding portions of the dam face where it's coming out. So that needs to be done and shored up and riprap and everything put in place for that. And the wave berm. The wave berm, basically, if we do that, that would basically solve all the problems with the erosion that we have with the pipe. So the wave berm is basically the big-ticket item also. The wave berm is important because right now it's eroded and you have a shelf, a vertical shelf. This will continue to erode more and more each time we get heavy storms or heavy rains and heavy winds in particular. As that erodes back, you're literally reducing the width of the dam at that water level. So it's important that we don't let that go too far because then you're getting the dam in a point where it's no longer stable on the top. And a lot of dams, when they flood, that top is the first place, when it starts to overflow, is when a lot of them really kind of go crazy and break apart. And that's where you see big channels basically break in, or big sections of the dam get washed away.
I get that and I don't disagree with you. So what would it be if we just, if we started there and did that portion of it?
Started first with the wave berm and then put off the tree removal? Is that what you're asking?
I, yes, I believe it is.
Okay. So the, right now, the tree removal is about $118,000, almost $119,000 is the estimate. The wave berm estimate is approximately about $308,000. So you would be doing the majority of the project first for the wave berm. But the trees, as we all know, trees are a problem on dams. So whether it's category-one, category-two, or whatever. So, and like I said before, I think with some of the other things that are going on with the conditions of having to lower the lake twice, having to close the road twice, some of those kind of things, you get a benefit of when you're working on both sides of the dam, you can be doing the work on both sides of the dam because the water's down, right? So when you send out your engineering people to do inspections or your testing people to test soils or concrete, whatever they need to test at the time, they can do it on both sides at the same time.
So the scope of work is on one side, you want to remove the trees and on the other side, you want to do the wave?
The wave berm.
And the drain, and the piece coming down, the drainage piece? That's where the erosion's coming?
Right, the outlet of the pipe, yes.
Okay. So if we did both of those, then the cost for us would be?
$405,000 at one time. If you do it separately, we were looking at about $427,000.
And what is the timeframe for that to be done approximately? I know you can't pinpoint it.
We're very close to moving forward with this as a full project. So that would be something that with approval to continue where the direction we're going, we were looking at advertising this probably in January and taking bids at the end of January and then moving the project into construction in probably early March, which is a good time to be doing this kind of work. So we would be on target to probably get most of this work done in this FY, maybe at least half of it done this FY, hopefully a little more.
So before June 30th?
Right, right. We would get the majority of it, I think, done before June 30th, maybe even complete, especially if we can work, like you say, if we're working on both sides of the dam at the same time.
So when you're talking about the inconvenience of closing it because of, you know, doing this project, would that roadway have to be closed at least on a temporary basis during the day when they're working? Would people, and how would that work? I mean, or is it closed together for those months that they're going to be working on that project?
Right, so we're going to have to probably close that down for a long period of time, just like we're going to do on Pendleton Dam, working, whether we're working on both sides or just one side. Because you're going to have equipment moving back and forth across it. You know, you'll be bringing soil and stuff in on the project, you'll be bringing riprap in on the project, depending upon, you know, which side you're working on that day. There's going to be probably some potential, the reason why, the reason why the two, the delay and everything would be, or the additional time would be, is that if you're only doing one side of the dam at a time, you're actually doing, you're actually not taking, excuse me, you're actually not taking care of or taking the time to be able to work on the other side that you could be doing, right? So that's going to make it where basically you'd have to close it down for, you know, pretty much the same amount of time for two projects instead of just one.
So with these two facets of the project, that's all that we're going to be doing? Not all, but I mean, obviously, that's major. But there's not a third phase into this at all, is there?
No, there's no anticipated third phase unless, you know, something happens and we get upgraded that we'd have to go through, you know? Even though safe dams just did their evaluation, that doesn't seem like something that would happen. But if regulations change or something, you know, pushed us into that, I can't say it's impossible for it to happen, but it's unlikely at this point. There are some other small things that, you know, would have to be do, that we'll be doing also during this time with things like animal guards on the seepage pipe, filter pipes, and some of that kind of stuff. But some of that stuff we can actually do in-house.
And is that included in the 400,000 that you spoke of before?
No, some of the small things are not, like the subsurface drain outlets is something that we can, we're going to do and the animal guards. There is a, there was something else here, give me a second. There's a old erosion settlement control fence, a silt fence that's running through the back of the dam that we're going to take out. So, I mean, the contractor can take it, they're going to be ripping everything out of there anyway. So at this point, they probably would take it out anyway.
And the additional cost for those items that you just spoke of there, would they be covered by SPOLOST or is that going to come out of general funds?
We actually could use SPOLOST for that, but this is very, this is, it's money, but it's insignificant to the, you know, the giant grand scheme of what we're doing, obviously. So it's more like flushing the subdrain, the subgrade, the subdrains, excuse me, subsurface drains and adding like a piece of pipe and then a little animal guard is nothing more than a kind of a V-shaped piece of metal that goes over the tip of that pipe to try to keep animals from climbing up in it.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you. If the, all the improvements were done as you recommend from your evaluation, how long will those, I know you can't tell the future, but on average or in your estimation, how long would that dam be set to go forward? Would it be 10 years? Even if Safe Dam never comes back to it, what, how long can we expect this $405,000 investment to last us?
That's a good question and like you said, it's impossible for me to give you a super accurate answer upon it.
Right, in your estimation.
You know, this dam has been there since it was built and I don't remember when that was because it was long before my time here with the town, but I know it's been decades. If I am speaking out of term, if anybody knows, I think that dam's been around for a long time. I don't see why we wouldn't get the same number of years out of it that we already have. In fact, you know, we're making it better and stronger, so maybe even longer than it already has been in place. And like I said, I'm not 100% sure what that timeframe is on that dam. If you'd like, I could look that up and email you that information.
I have a question for you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
So presently, we're looking at the, we looked at this originally as a potential upgrade to a category-one dam. They recommended certain improvements that would bring it up to the category-one dam level. And what you're proposing is that we just continue to do what we had planned to do before, which would technically bring it up to a category-one dam if we were to follow through with it, but they have taken it down to a category-two. Is that correct?
That's correct. When we're finished with this, it would, we'd have to do, you know, the paperwork to get it officially done. That would be the only other thing that would be lacking. That's my understanding that that's the only thing they'd be lacking from, if they had actually upgraded it to a category-one.
That's what I wanted to know.
Right, so the flows and everything have been designed to handle the quarter PMP and all that kind of stuff.
So in the future, if they come back to us and they just say, well, we made a mistake, you needed to be a category-one, we just have to do the paperwork but no additional work?
That's true, as long as they haven't changed the regulations. So like if we do this 10, 20 years from now, the regulations may change. And whatever the regulations are at that time is what we would have to meet. But, you know, like I say, this is, that's a good question, that's all part of it.
If they were not a part of the equation from a year ago or whenever it was they started talking, what would your recommendation be for us, the work for us to do to that dam? Completely taking them out of the equation?
Taking safe dams out of the equation?
Right.
Yeah. I would still do these things. I think it's important to remove the trees from the back of the dam. I also think it's important to fix the erosion that's occurred on the face of the dam and in particularly the wave berm helps protect that from happening again. It armors the front of the dam. So I would say the work that they've, the work that we've identified is work that we should do.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, council.
And any other questions? Your motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to not amend the scope of work and to continue the same original scope of work that we discussed for the 2024 Adams Lake Dam Improvement Project PW 2024-10.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a second. Before we vote, I'd like to ask one more question. And I think you've already answered it, but I want to be on, make sure it's on the record. All of this is covered with SPOLOST dollars?
That's correct, and I believe the SPOLOST dollars are actually in the bank to do this project.
And the SPOLOST list, or us putting that much money in the SPOLOST dollars, predicted this type of situation? This is not something that was a surprise?
No, we actually had this, and I don't want to say how much money we have in SPOLOST for this, but it's public records, so I guess I will. We had $500,000 set aside for this project and it's estimated to come in, you know, at the 405. So, or 40, yeah, about $405,000.
And we also have over $2 million in the SPOLOST account, so we're well-covered right now. So it was budgeted and we have the money in there at the moment.
Three SPOLOSTs?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I don't have any more questions. Anybody have any more?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for all the work on that. Okay, Brandon, legislation, resolution on micro-mobility?
Thank you, sir. This is a consideration to approve a resolution in support of state legislation supporting the Micro-Mobility Safety Act. At the last meeting during public comment, you heard from Mr. Keith Lawson Larson, excuse me, he's with BikeWalk FETT, and he is proposing that the state legislature adopt an amendment to Title 40 of OCGA that would allow local authorities more control over the regulation of micro-ability devices, and I think there's examples of that in your packet, and other electric power devices. A step towards this his success is showing local government support through the adoption of these resolutions. I believe he has also reached out to, you know, all of our sister cities and the county. So this would just be a resolution from the council just saying that we are, the town is in support of this legislation. It's not a binding thing, it's just showing our support.
Anytime we start talking about recommending legislation, I get a little bit shaky because I like to stay in my lane personally. But I did contact the state rep that he, Mr. Larson desires to carry it. Also contacted the alternative transportation director with ARC, talked to them about it a little bit. They didn't specifically say that they support this legislation because it's not come to them yet. They said there are some changes that need to be made in this section. So it's, I just want to state that from my standpoint, my opinion is I'm comfortable that there need to be some changes there. I just don't, I'm uncomfortable saying that every single thing in the legislation I 100% support. I appreciate Mr. Larson's work on this and, but I just, I felt the need to state what I have.
I don't disagree with you. I think that there's, I think it doesn't, I would like to know if this passes or it goes through, you know, the state legislation. What does that, what does that do for us? And what obligation are we as a town going to have with these, with what's in here? Or however, you know, I'm sure that the wording is going to be changed. Are we going to be forced or regulated to make some of these changes that they're asking in here? These, you know, these new lanes that they're talking about? And who's going to?
Wait, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And who's going to, who's going to enforce all this? Our police officers can't, you know, do what, you know, in reading through all of this, it's, you know, I can't imagine that they're going to be able to enforce that. It's got no teeth, you know, as written here. I just don't want that, you know, are we going to be obligated to start changing our roadways and putting all new lanes in for these type vehicles? I don't know. I just, obviously, there's a lot of questions that we're all going to have about it. I applaud his efforts and certainly anybody that's got, you know, handicapped in any way, I certainly think that we should make, you know, whatever, you know, opportunities for them. But for the general public driving all these electric vehicles and making all kinds of special accommodations for them, I see them driving around with these skateboards that things, they're flying 35, 40 miles an hour with those things, you know? And I don't know.
I think that's, I think that's his point is with regard to speed is that we can't, we can't regulate speed and he's saying we should have the ability to. And he lists in this presentation here, you know, wheelchair is not defined in the code, which is crazy. So, but I do have a couple of suggestions that are personal opinion about the resolution. On page two of the resolution, I would feel more comfortable where it says in the second whereas that you see on that page, whereas the town of Tyrone requires local jurisdiction authority to decrease the speed limit within an urban or residential district to 15 miles per hour. I don't, I don't know that we want to be that specific. I mean, why wouldn't we just say to decrease the speed limit as opposed to going 15 miles an hour? We have different roads and paths and areas where we allow golf carts and other vehicles. And then the next whereas says requires local jurisdiction authority to establish speed limit on shared-use paths at 25, at 20 miles per hour. Why do we have to say at 20 miles per hour? Why wouldn't we just stop it on shared-use paths? And councillor, I would love to hear your thoughts on exactly how far we're going here to into legislative territory. You know, we're not sitting in a committee hearing telling them what they should and should not say. So by doing this resolution, we're doing the same, we're doing that.
You're hitting on some very critical points because when you're looking at supporting what's going to amount to be general law for the entire state of Georgia, it's very difficult to carve out a specific exception for a town, a city, a county to treat differently. I don't think you're trying to do that. I believe the general thrust of this legislation is to give jurisdictions the authority to enact a speed limit which is lower than the current minimum. You know, providing language like that to allow the legislature to consider that general concept and for them to come up with that number is probably a better way of looking at this than saying this is the number that we want.
That's exactly what I think we should, we should do. I genuinely support his efforts. I just don't want us getting so down in the weeds where we're trying to tell- members of the General Assembly exactly what to do. That's just my, my take on it, and I envy your input. Others?
I agree that the spirit of the legislation proposed is good. We need to have some power that we don't have to regulate these types of vehicles on taxpayer paths and sidewalks and wherever they're, they're going. It's, it's, like I said, the spirit of it is good. The letter of it, like Mayor Dial is saying, is too specific. I agree totally, that it should be a more general rule so that what fits for Tyrone, obviously Peachtree City has a whole different set of issues there with the miles of paths and, and accesses on bridges and all tunnels, all kinds of things that they need. They may want to say, you know, you need to slow down to five miles an hour going through this tunnel. I don't, I, I think it's just too specific, so I agree that the spirit of it is good. We, we can definitely work with our legislators to, to propose something in, in this like manner. But this is, I agree with the mayor, it's just too specific.
I'd like to jump in there too and say I agree with, with all three, Billy the mayor and Jessica, from the perspective of cost, too. This legislation, like if, like, like Billy was saying, if, if it passes, then we would be forced to make improvements, which costs us. We have to fit foot the bill for that whenever it comes in, just like the same thing with the dam when they decided to change to a different category. So legislation also causes us to have to spend money, and is that fair to the taxpayers? So I agree with the same thing. I love the spirit of this. I think it should be regulated to a certain point, but it is very specific, and, and I would agree.
And I will say Mr. Larson knows more, or he's forgotten more than I know about this topic, I promise you. But I'm only going to respectfully recommend that we make two changes to the resolution. And that is, on the second whereas, on the second page, end that line at district, or take out to 15 miles per hour. And then on the next whereas, end that sentence at paths, so take out at 20 miles per hour. That's my respectfully submitted recommendation. If anybody else has any changes they'd like to make, that's fine too. And let's face it, it'll be an election year, so legislature might not consider it in the first place, but...
So if, if in fact they didn't, they don't recommend, they don't acknowledge it, does this resolution go away?
It's just, a resolution is, is like us picking them up on, picking up the phone and calling and saying, hey, we'd like for you to take a look at this legislation. That's about all a resolution does. And is that fair?
That's fair.
Yeah. So they may never even see this. But it's, it's a, it's a productive exercise for all of the Fayette County governments, which is what, what they're doing. For all of the Fayette County governments to come together and say, we, we would like for you to look at this legislation and dust it off. And I think almost everybody in this universe agrees that they need to make some changes. Is there a motion to approve the resolution with the, the mentioned changes?
I would just like to ask Mr. Davenport if that, if there's anything else that he saw. If we change those two things, is there anything else in conjunction that needs to be changed as well?
The mayor brings up a good point when he talks about how the resolution is a formality, but it's basically just indicating support. Softening the language to be a broad support document is what you're doing here. Along the lines of what you've done, I don't think anything else in the resolution needs to be adjusted to be consistent with that. But like Mayor Dial was saying, this topic is close and personal to the gentleman that put this together. He knows a whole lot more about it than we do, and these are important items for him to consider. So I would say these are appropriate, and they seem to be consistently modified based upon the amendments that were put forth at this point.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to support this micro mobility resolution to the state.
As amended?
With the changes as amended.
First, second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? All right. Thank you. We'll get those changes made, and we'll get a copy of the, the final document to you.
Good evening, counsel. I'm here to request that MIH Consulting LLC would like to donate a three drawer file cabinet to the finance department of the town of Tyrone. I can actually use this. My drawers are completely full. And there's certain things like taxes and things that I have to look at on occasion, and I'd really like to have an extra space to keep it in my office without having to go all the way to 881 to grab this stuff. I would like to see if it would be okay for you to accept this three drawer file cabinet for the finance department, please.
Controversial issue you got on here. All right, does anybody have any questions? There a motion?
I make a motion that we approve to receive the donated file cabinet from MIH Consulting LLC to the finance department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments. We welcome you to come forward at this time.
An update on the post office?
I'm glad you asked. I got it right here, so I'll speak, I'll speak to that in council comments.
Okay.
You want to talk to us about something else, too? The floor is yours.
No.
Not really. All right. Any other public comments? All right. Are there any staff comments? We have a couple. Go ahead, Sandy. Go ahead.
Counsel, I passed out before the meeting a sheet about the anthem increase for medical for all of the employees. Originally, they came back with a 10% increase. Our broker, MSI, went back to them and was able to get it down to a 6.7% increase this year, which is lower than what we had budgeted, so we have enough budgeted for this. And so that's why we didn't bring it to you for approval. This is more just FYI. Just so that you know, the last three years, we've come back with a flat increase, so it's been the exact same amount. So it was really time for an increase. We were able to get it down because they gave us a rebate of $95,000 from the 2023 year, calendar year. And, no, I'm sorry. It was the 20, yeah, it was the 2023 calendar year. So for that reason, they did go on ahead and bring it down. But unfortunately, we did get an increase this year.
Any questions? We don't need a vote on that.
No, that was just informational for you guys.
Good job on all of that. Appreciate you.
This week at the DDA meeting, the board voted to discontinue the plans to go forward with redeveloping the fire station property to a food truck park, and that was based substantially on the, the test run that we've done with the food truck pop-ups across the street at Shamrock Park. We've had, you know, we've gotten some reviews from the food trucks, we've gotten some, some other feedback. And while we see that there is merit in continuing to have food trucks in town, we certainly don't see merit in going forward with a full-fledged park and, and spending the, the kind of money that, that would be required for that. So the, the discussion then went towards, so what do we, what do we do now? And obviously, the, I think the next obvious choice, which was a long-term consideration anyway, the food truck park was, 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 was never meant to be a, a permanent fixture there. The long-term goal was always to have that property redeveloped as a, as a, either a, you know, a mixed-use type downtown, traditional downtown building. That was always kind of the, the future goal. But as, as an aside from that, or as part of that conversation, you know, the, the, the police department property always comes into play because it's, it, it's, it's, you know, right next to the park. It is a, it is a, a great piece of real estate. It's downtown, obviously. And so having the two properties side by side, if you had the right developer, we think that that would be a, a nice redevelopment project is having that entire area, both, both projects included. So what I was asked by the DDA to, to ask you all is, is, and I'm not asking for a vote tonight, I'm just asking for feedback, and, and we can have further discussions going forward, is, is there any appetite for including the police department property in a future development like that? And of course, that would require transferring that property to the DDA like we did with the police department property. One of the big thoughts behind that is if you're talking to developers and you're putting this thing out for, for sale, I think it's going to be a much easier sell if you have two or three acres for sale adjacent to the park, rather than a, a, a one-acre piece of property and then another piece of property that's, that would be nice to have, that's also right next to the park. If they're combined, we think that's more marketable. So just wanted to get y'all's feedback, and, you know, what kind of, you know, thoughts you might have on that.
Brandon, I, I think that's a good idea, actually. I think it would add additional economic incentive for a, a developer to come in to do that. I know that in our, in our renderings for Phase Two of the park, we actually show that building being demolished anyway. We are still putting a, a parking lot over there. So the extra space would be just additional green space, and I think it would be, it would serve more economic viability if that was combined with the lot next to it. So I completely agree with the thought process that you're going through. I'm sure there's a lot of details that need to be worked out, and you'll bring those back at some point, but that's my opinion on the matter.
Jessica.
Assuming you had something to add.
I wanted to talk because you're going to.
I have a lot of questions. I mean, it's, it is something to chew on, but I have a lot of conversations about transferring it to the DDA as far as their ability to find a developer to do it, to do something like that. The proven, the track record of the DDA. I know it's, you know, the economy was a big issue with, with the way things were with the building and the condition of the building there. And I just have a lot of questions, so I think I need to, to chew on it and, and come back to you all with a list of questions.
I agree with Jessica.
I would say it's the right direction. If, if we go in that direction, the last thing I would want is for us to then press pause or stop multiple times over the next year plus, three years. Lose a grant. That kind of thing. I would hate for us to do that. So if we're going, again, it's the right direction to make use of, of good property and make it a benefit to our people. But have a plan in place that is a good plan and stick to it. Don't float, I would say. That's, I, I don't want to be critical of anything. I don't want to be negative. I just want to say, let's, let's do, let's make a decision and do it. And it, it is, it makes sense that we would incorporate the DDA for, for procedural purposes. I don't, I don't have any opposition to the DDA of being a part of that process. But let's just get it done, if that's what we decide to do.
Right. I would suggest as a kind of preliminary measure, we can take, Phillip suggested this, and it's a good idea. Several years ago, UGA did that RSVP document for us, and it has some, it has some renderings of some things that could happen downtown, some buildings and some placements. I would suggest, before we do any, make any decisions, taking some of that information to some, some developers, just to see what their thoughts are with this, you know, is this viable here? Is this something you would even be interested in investing in? We're, we're talking theoretical here. We're not talking about, hey, I, I would love to see you come in, you specific developer. But talk to some developers and see what the appetite is. Based on that, if there's, if there's some interest, I would suggest getting an architect to actually draw up, not, not full plans, but some renderings, some, some, some elevations of some buildings that would fit on that lot, that would match the styling of a traditional downtown building. So that then you could, if, if that's where we want to go, then you have something to market. I can give you 100 examples of where other DDAs and cities have done this, where they've, they've had a vision. They put that vision on paper, and they go out and to market, and they get it done with private money. It's just a matter of, of getting it done, and so take it. So if we have that direction, you know, that, that's what, but, but doing it that way, you know, if we go out to five developers and they all say, that's, that's scale of, of development's not going to work in downtown Tyrone because of the rooftops or whatever, then we know, okay, well, we got to back up and punt, and we haven't spent a lot of money. We haven't put a lot of time in it. And then we can kind of, kind of go from there, but...
Talk to the people who are smarter than us about development, and the people who their livelihood depends on something succeeding. And if they end up being a part of it, okay, but we still need to talk to people who know more than I do.
Right. Okay, understood.
Anyone else? Okay. Any other staff comments?
That is all I have.
Counsel comments?
Just, just very simply, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving to all our residents and obviously every, all our staff, and I hope you guys have a pleasant holiday.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I have a comment on Veterans Day, which thank you, Dee, for arranging that, and Brandon for being our emcee. I appreciate all the veterans who were here and everyone who spoke, but specifically Mr. Minor, Colonel, Lieutenant Colonel, I believe, Minor, mentioned the fact that he would like to see a static peace placed at the Veterans Park, and I would like to know if anyone on council has an interest in, in seeing... like to know if anyone on council has an interest in seeing that done, and working with maybe a committee of veterans to get it here, to maintain it, to possibly bring in donations if needed for a platform, a marker, whatever. I don't know how it all works, but I just want to know, I personally would like to see something there in scale, you know, with the size of our park, not, you know, a Huey or anything huge, but, you know, a cannon or two or whatever. So, that's my question to council. Is there anyone who else would like to see that?
Is it okay if we nominate you for that position?
I would be happy to work with someone, a committee, or, I mean, my son's a veteran, so...
Anything that'll be another asset to our town?
We have floated the idea before, and we were leaning towards something like a Bradley or a tank or a smaller tank, or a, you know, personnel carrier, something along those lines, artillery piece. And I was having conversations with Mr. Minor, and he has a lot of connections, and, you know, so, but you hit on some good points as far as like fundraising and a group or somebody to oversee this, because I do know when the military turns over something like that, they do expect it to be kept up, painted, you know. I have some example, I know that there's two examples where Huey helicopters were on static display, and they weren't maintained by who had them, and they're gone now. So, the mounts are there, but the helicopters are gone, just because they weren't maintained, and they eventually, you know, they just sit out and they degrade. So, it's a lot, so we definitely want to make sure whatever we take on is something that we can reasonably manage. And you can certainly take, you know, donations or form something where, you know, over the course of five, eight, 10 years, however long, between, you know, being painted or whatever, you're collecting funds to go back towards that, and there's somebody, you know, keeping tabs on it, very important. But yeah, I think we can make it happen if that's what you all want to do. We have plenty of space over there, especially in that open area, to make something like that.
I have a quick question. Like, I love the idea. We are planning to do some veteran park improvements with signage, so it's important that we coordinate that effort with whatever piece we're adding to the park, because we're thinking about like gateway signage and all kinds of really cool stuff. So, it's important that if you're putting something that's going to be a focal point in our park, that our signage and everything lines up appropriately. And then also, if it becomes like a vehicle, would that be considered an attractive nuisance? And would that raise our insurance rates because people are climbing on it or things like that? That's, I guess, a Dennis and an insurance question. But just be aware, like some of the smaller items, like she said, like cannons, like they're just like anything that you would just, a kid would climb over, but it wouldn't cause our rates to really jump up. So, just thinking about those elements. But I think it's a great idea. It's a fantastic idea.
As Brandon has mentioned, we've talked about this more than once before in the past, and I can tell you, I know Dave very well, but he spoke here at Veterans Day, and he's obviously part of the VFW over there, and him and probably a half a dozen others have come, and they have all volunteered to whatever it takes to put a piece in there, pour the concrete, you know, or whatever it's going to take. So, I think you're going to get a lot of support if you put it out there. We certainly don't need an F-18 or anything out there, you know. My friend, Mr. Minor, he thinks big, you know. But I definitely agree that we have to have something there, at least one piece, even two smaller pieces. But I think we certainly will get not only support from the VFW and the veterans groups, but I think a lot of citizens in this town would get behind something like that as well.
Okay. Any feedback on how you'd like us to proceed as far as, you know?
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is first find out what's available to us, and there's plenty of people around that have access and have contacts in there. And if we can get a couple of those together and let them give us their thoughts on it, because they're going to know more, like Mayor Dial says, they're going to know more about it than we will, and see what they think that we can actually get. Sometimes it takes a while to get what you're looking for, but I think that's a good spot. And then, once that happens, then we can determine as a group where it's all going to go, and, you know, move from there.
All right, so, okay. We'll start working on that. I'll reach out to some veterans that I know in town, and we'll volunteer some folks to help us at least come up with ideas and thoughts and try to track some stuff down. It'd be great to have a group of citizen veterans be behind this, and of course, Ms. Whelan from council to kind of do that as a start to maybe something bigger with a veterans committee or something. But, okay, we'll start working on that over the next couple of weeks.
Thanks for that idea.
Thank you.
Other council comments?
Sorry. What was that, Dee?
Are you through with your announcements?
Yeah, we're on council comments that I'm...
Hold on, you got other staff comment? Okay. We're going to go back to staff comment.
You can go back.
You take precedence, Dee.
We have a few meetings coming up.
I forgot, I know.
Okay.
They're advertised, but yeah, go ahead. We have upcoming, as you know, it's been advertised, we have millage, we have to redo our millage meetings, and let me get my calendar up, because I didn't think to put it in staff comments because it was already advertised. But December 1st, at 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., we're having public hearings, and then on December 8th, at 6:30 p.m., we'll have a final public hearing and the vote to read adopt the millage rate. At 6:30 p.m. on the 8th.
And for clarification, the reason we're having to do that is because the numbers that were provided to us that we then advertised and held public hearings on and voted on, it was off by that much. It was a mistake made, not by the town, but someone else, and the number was just barely off, and because it was just barely off, we had to advertise the correct number and come back and go right back through the process. So, that's the context.
Last one. We have a Christmas program on November 30th. I don't think we're meeting until then. November 30th at Shamrock Park is the Christmas Market and Tree Lighting by Mayor Dial, from 2:00 to 7:00.
And fireworks.
Well, if you want to get technical, it starts at 1:30, because we're having the dedication and the grand opening of the pavilion at 1:30. So, sorry, we got off track there.
The news is, we don't have to hear from Dee, because that was his comment.
That was my comment.
Any other council comments? All right, post office, let's talk about the post office. I'm going to go into this with positive attitude. I don't want to be, I don't want to be, fly off the handle again. Okay, in August and September, they promised it would be open in October. They promised, Congressman's Office, they promised us it would be ready in October. They have been doing work on it, they've been painting the parking stripes and the railing on the outside, and they are doing work inside. So, we will, we do see some of the fruits of their labor, but it didn't open in October. Therefore, at the Veterans Day ceremony we had, Congressman Jack's district director was here, and we had another conversation about the fact that it didn't open in October as they promised. And so, he agreed that he would go back and speak to his contact with the postal service in Washington, DC. So, he went to do that, I told him I'd go talk to the postmaster. I talked to the postmaster the other day, and she is our postmaster, and so she understands our frustration. She has the same frustration. I asked her if they have staffing, are there any workforce issues that they're encountering? She said, no, we're all ready to come over. She said they have their telephones, they're waiting on their machines. I don't know what machines, I guess it's sorting machines or something like that, but they're waiting on their machines, and they are being told January. Then I got an email from Congressman Jack's district director yesterday, yes, yesterday at 7:11 p.m., and this email is from Washington, DC USPS. And this email kind of confuses me, so if it confuses you, you're in decent company. "We are in the final weeks of construction on Phase One of this project. Following Phase One, the facility will be ready for reoccupation and reopening. Local leadership will determine the exact day of reopening." That doesn't mean this local leadership. That means the postal service's local leadership. "Local leadership will determine the exact day of reopening once Phase One has been completed." I don't know what Phase One means. It just says, "Then the final weeks of construction." And then, so, he forwarded that email to me, and I told him what I learned at the post, from the postmaster, and that's the best, that's the best we can do at this moment. So, January it is, and hopefully that will be true. And if you have any other questions, I don't know how I can provide anything beyond what I've provided, but I'll certainly try. Any other council comments?
Oh, though Sandy Creek, they play their second playoff game tomorrow night.
That's right, that's right. Play Monroe area. And counselor, I understand there's a need for executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I do have four items for executive session. One, personnel, the other three are executive session minutes. One is a revised version of your October 16th, 2025 minutes. A second is a set of executive session minutes that had after your work session, November 6th, 2025, and the third set is executive session minutes after your council meeting on November 6th, 2025. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Uh-huh.